All the November third North Plains City Council meeting to order at seven oh one. Already done the pledge of allegiance, so Lori, would you make a call please?
Thank you. Counselor Dunbar?
Present.
Counselor Page?
Here.
Counselor Negadort?
Uh, here.
Counselor Ready?
Here.
Counselor Payton?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Uh, I'll now retain a motion for the approval of the agenda and the um October twentieth councilments.
I move to approve the cons or the count of concerns agenda for the third and the minutes for
And you do your second.
I'll second it.
Okay, been moved and seconded, do I, uh, is there any discussion? No discussion, uh, all in favor of approving the consent agenda and the council members from October twenty say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Alright, and I have Sue Ha for uh, public comment.
I can handle what?
You could just come up and say name and instead of outside of the city.
Make sure it's.
Oh, yes.
It's on.
He took care of me.
Thank you.
Sue Ha inside the city meeting. I guess I have a comment about the parking in town. Whether it's on our street, other streets, people are parking campers and trailers on the streets for a week. There's um, a vinyl window truck that's been on Main Street between Wink Wasco and Maine for probably coming close to four weeks. And you go down Wasco and there's trucks sitting out in the road and you can't get by. It's just gotten ridiculous and then on the other side of doors on Maine, there is where the green light is that? Where the.
Oh, yes.
There, I mean, now we have a, the flatbed is back and I don't know how that's gonna be affected on and we get green light in there. Because that's a busy intersection and also I'm curious when we could get um, crosswalks across that new one because you know, it's got a nice little raised areas, people just go through them and the mother's coming from the school of doors. Um, it's just, cause I almost got hit the other day, so, but I'm just thinking with all these new uh, housing coming in and we've got big trucks parking on streets, it's just not safe for anybody. And when the other day I had to actually go find the neighbor in the neighborhood who had this one car, cause we couldn't get through. So, because it's parking down one side only and so it was just kind of passing, so it's, it's just unsafe for the fire department or anybody else might need to come through, so.
Well, thank you and we will address that during the council uh, reports, but thank you, I appreciate bringing that to our attention. Okay. And Lori had said that was all correct?
That's all, we receive anything else?
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, next is boards and commissions quarterly report, uh, we have Parks.
She just presented the, provided the.
Oh, okay, so we don't need it, okay, that's good. Okay, so moving on then, um, is there any comments or questions from council on Parks report?
Yeah, if you have any questions, go ahead, cause they meet Monday, so.
Yeah. Counselor Reading, any quick?
And they were asking us for, to come up with the cleaning fee in that recommendation? Or is it just?
They just wanted you to consider it, um, yeah, it's just there, they just have some concern, so there's just some things they want you guys to, that's it.
Yeah, okay, so I guess my throwback to them is we don't wanna price out or discourage everyday residents. Like would the cleaning fee be refundable? Would be one of my questions to them. And then uh, private parties only might exclude the kind of community building events we wanna encourage in North Plains. And so just to think about the warning.
Oh, go ahead, sorry, I was gonna add something. No, I, I was gonna add to what Counselor Reading said, um. I think what I would ask is for Parks to make the proposal. Give us, get, again, uh, I would look at Parks as being better at inching our parks than I am. So I'm looking, I would be looking for them to give the proposal, but I'd also be curious upon their, uh, my suggestion would be, yeah, like make, yeah, like, can we get data from other cities, can they go talk to more cities and I'm happy to make introductions or bill on for can, uh, other cities, but get some data and then, yeah, bring it to council for, for approval would be my, my suggestion personally.
Well, I do second the, uh, person De- Debra saying that, uh, yes, we will consider it, please give it to consider.
Yes.
If, if I might, uh, just briefly, um, address Council Reading's question about the cost low, that sort of thing. The way that the conversation about the fee when they discussed it was to kind of tack it on for unusual, unusual messy. Like we don't have a fee that we tack on if something is unusual messy. Um, you know, uh, we have a, we have a deposit that's fully refundable if there's like damage, you know, gouge floors or whatever. But if like, but if they just absolutely trash and they don't clean it up, we don't really kind of have a punitive and cost recovery fee for those instances, so that's what it's about, so it wouldn't be like tacked on to everybody's bill, it would just be ew, uh, you need to pay an extra fee.
If, if it costs the city money, I would be open to hearing that conversation. Provided that it was reasonable and customary, or usual customer.
Right, and their idea of having pictures before and after, how is it kind of a vulnerable file that we have would be great, however, give us a give us a work with.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yes, we will consider it and.
Cause they don't pay a deposit for the for the pavilion, like they do here, they pay it, they pay a deposit and then if they leave it messy or if they damage something, then we they don't get the full deposit back, but with the pavilion, they, it's not the case, they just pay a whatever hourly rental fee and so I think what they, in their minds, they're thinking maybe we should have some kind of deposit and then if they leave it a mess, then they don't get the whole deposit or there will be some kind of adjustment.
I think what I'm hearing from council is we're open to it, presenting, adding, you most likely have our support, we just need to know what you want us to support first. But it's, makes sense to all of us.
Good timing, cause I'm putting their agenda packet together.
See, so, very part of it is. Okay, any other comments?
I, I did regarding uh, the playground at the Louis Wentz Park. I mean, that's just a very small area, is there a feasibility study, is someone coming in and saying, it's not, I mean, it's kind of an awkward location even for kids with that industrial commercial building across from it, so I'm, I know it's our only land to some extent, but I have a question.
Counsel Ready, great question, so what they discussed was, um, it would talk about does the city have budget for doing a feasibility study just to see what can physically fit, what are the costs to see if it, when it even makes sense? Um, but some of the questions that you just asked were very much discussed. Uh, but it, it will take kind of a feasibility to study to answer that, I'm interested in having it done.
And doesn't need to be a, a parked play and it could be a community gathering space, these pubs and barbecues and just parking right there, people can buy and.
What they're looking at, just so you guys know, is when, when the dog park went in and we took the playground structure out because it was all underwater, three, four sets of the year. That was the only play structure on that side of town and so they, they're trying to think of options to get some kind of playground equipment on that side of town for the residents over there and that's the only park really that we have, it's, you're right, it's very small, there's a sidewalk that goes right through the middle of it, um. So they are just trying to figure out options to get some play stuff.
I'd be curious to get a staff assessment on, do we have funds and is this a good idea or a bad idea, cause I, I mean, I guess the question is from staff is, is this something that we have budgeted for or do we need to make budget for, I guess would be my first question.
Um, great question, Counsel Dunbar, I, I, I would need to take a look, but I think that we would have the opportunity to potentially use some, again, I need to verify this, but if we're building new playground equipment that didn't exist before and the intent was just more capacity for playground because of population growth then that might allow some SDC funds to be used on a study. Um, but we would need to kind of go through and make sure that that's the case, that's, that's where we would first look. Uh, we're not replacing an existing playground at that spot, but we are trying to put up new equipment of some kind because there's been growth. So that's how we would look at it. And that might, that might unlock SDC.
Counsel, what's the thought? What, what is everyone? We're trying to set it to.
Uh, this is Counsel Payton, I just wanted to chime in and say I attended the Parks Board meeting as an ex officio and I was just reviewing my notes, um, and I apologize if there's any inaccuracies here, um, but my notes, uh, to Bill's point, did, did quote SDC fund might be able to provide funding for playground equipment. Um, also, um, that the Parks Board would bring forward an intent to city council for an interest in a feasibility study for a play structure at the park. Um, so those are just some of the notes I captured, so I think everyone here is along, along the same pathway, um, and I think uh, you know, just to echo Lori's comments as well, that was my understanding that it was really to replace, um, the Purple Parks play structure for that, that side of town.
So what, what discount, what, what would the whole accounts be?
I want to know where the play structure is needed or we could do something like it's an open space for community gathering. Is, is that a very, restructure, that's needed or not?
So clarifying question, uh, would that be something that would we do a, you're thinking we would do a study to determine that or is this just something that we would decide as council or Parks would decide, what, what's your thought, counsel? Counsel Page, I was trying to, like, what's your thought, like, I just, I'm trying to expand the thought, so I understand.
So my thought process is that we want a park that we totally build on, like, but is that what we, what we really need? And we, we really need use, or we, would there be something that it'll turn out to kind of park space, open space be more useful, maybe even cheaper and better, so that's kind of what I'm thinking.
May, maybe it's not come up the study is what you're saying?
Right.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to. So, my, my read on that would be you're saying we probably do need a feasibility study.
As long as it's not too expensive.
Well, yes, yes, of course, Counsel Ready?
I'm just playing off the idea of Counselor Page is wanting this information without spending a bunch of money, I've kind of put this by bill the other day was in our water bills, start doing surveys and every month people are entered into a lottery for X amount off of their next bill if they win the lottery by taking the survey. And we start, or, or the police and how to fund it, or any of our major questions that we keep going, we really wanna hear from the people. Put a QR code in our water bills, it's something I'm floating by you at this moment.
Some interesting ideas, yes, counsel?
Uh, to add to Counseler Reading and Counselor Page's comment. Um, I understand that the pavilion tends to be really popular for rentals, that's a source of revenue, perhaps this park would be another opportunity for another pavilion or just rental space as well. I think that's a, this is Counsel Payton, I, I do think, uh, that's a great idea that Counsel Higginard had mentioned, I think my only concern would just be the residents that live near that area, um, and parking in that area. But I think there could be other outside of the box ideas that we just haven't considered. Um, but I, I think the intent, my understanding during that Parks Board meeting was to replace a play structure, so um, I think if we could align and move forward as we'd love more information and maybe Plan B and Plan C, I might, um, check all the boxes here on those days.
Okay, so it seems like we have an agreement that we want more information. So, yeah, so send it back to Parks and give us more, bring the ideas and tentatively yes, but we need more information. Is that what I'm hearing? I think that makes sense to me.
Yeah, whether we should even have play structure there, I, even though there isn't some there, other taken out, do we still need those? Or do you wanna do something different?
Yeah, and give us a couple of options, I guess would be the request for Parks, give us two or three options and we'll try to figure out how to, if that's the case, if that's what we need to do. So, okay, anything else on Parks? Oh, I'm sorry, please.
Could I just add, um, you know, just, just to keep us all on this one page, could we also propose a timeline, right? So multiple options and then a timeline with like a, you know, commit to date, um, just so that it doesn't get lost in the shuffle.
Uh, timelines from Parks or timeline from us?
Timeline from Parks. I mean, we can propose a timeline if, if that's the, the will of the council, but, um, also a timeline.
I'd rather they, they kind of give us a timeline, it'd be better.
Yeah.
Then we're letting them do the work and.
Yeah, so I would just ask if we could just have a timeline of what they're looking for, um, that way it's something actionable for us.
Yeah, that would be good, perfect, thank you. Okay. So, nothing else, we'll move on to Counselor Reading, uh, well, sorry, unfinished business, Counselor Reading, the, um resident, non-resident labeling for public comment, so did you have a chance to get some data for us?
I contacted LOC and did not receive the right information back, I messaged them back saying this isn't quite what I'm looking for and I never heard that.
Okay, um, so we do have a staff report, do we wanna continue with that or do we want to try to get more from LOC, Counsel Reading? Or Bill, either one?
I, my answer to that is the staff report was put together anticipating we won't have anything else from LOC, well, I, basically because there aren't requirements for how cities do this and so they don't have a lot of, you know, they can tell you what other cities do and I think that they gave you some or they were pointed, in the email back to you, they pointed to, you know, take a look at a couple other cities, that sort of thing. Um, so with the staff report really, you know, I, I, I do not wanna get into the weeds with it unless you ask here, um, I'm happy to, but the bottom line is, um, it kind of boils down to home rule, you get to do what you want.
Yeah.
You know, and you get to, you get to clarify it in terms of what you think most successfully builds the record and lets people look back on what the record is, um, so I, I don't know that you need any big decisions tonight, but my recommendation would be to discuss it, maybe continue to discuss it and then let's maybe look at putting it into council rules by resolution, if you wanna do other council rules changes. But that's where we would wanna do that is in council rules for how public comment is done.
I think, I think that's a good suggestion, um, so we'll just need consensus on having direct staff to create the resolution, so we heard from Counsel Reading, do you have anything additional you wanted to, any thoughts?
I think I just wanna hear everybody's thoughts and then begin to talk about it.
So, Counsel Payton, you gave some, but can you give them any updates you wanted to give on your thoughts on this? Or any additional?
Uh, yeah, I, I would say in this topic, I think, um, to Counseler Reading's point has created further divide and that is not the intent, um, but I do think that um, sometimes on council we will weigh decisions one way or another versus resident taxpayer of North Plains versus non-taxpayer of North Plains surfaces and you know what I think about the intent, right, um, we are policymakers and I think this is a really great call out, um. And I, I would be open, either way, I'm, I'm open, um, to hearing other ideas, but I think for myself um, it is important to hear from, from the tax base, the constituents that we represent. And I don't necessarily, um, see the long-term harm with differentiating taxpayer versus non-taxpayer, however, just to play the devil's advocate, I also don't always see why we, um, have to say resident versus non-resident, so I'm, I'm really down the middle, I think at the end of the day, it's really trying to be inclusive and not exclude anyone is my understanding um, of why this was brought forward, but I, I'm probably not the best person to ask first, I would love to hear some other, other, um, for or against.
Okay, Counsel, uh, again.
I would like to, oh, I would like to hear a proposal, um, of, of language if there are any to consider, um, I'm really like Trista, it, it is, I see that the benefit is being able to distinguish and differentiate it for the purpose of prioritization and considering, um, decision-making, I also like the idea of being able to differentiate, um, uh, special, um, interest groups, et cetera, too, so I like the labeling, I would just like to see that proposal for consideration.
So I think the proposal and correct from Counsel Reading, uh, the proposal was to have, uh, residents in the city, uh, nine seven one three three. That doesn't work. Taxpaying residents in the city, nine seven one three three residents and then outside of the nine seven one three three, is that roughly-ish?
The one I like the best is rural resident nine seven one three three.
Okay.
Because it was being labeled as resident or non-resident, but they all have the same zip code. Then you could say resident, a rural resident.
Effectively, we'd go to three, when you come from public comment, you would just say, I'm a resident, I'm a rural resident, or I'm a non-resident. So, okay, so that's the proposal. So, Counsel Page, your thoughts?
Again, now with the word resident, then what kind of implications that means? Uh, cause I think that the word resident has specific language meaning towards it, I was about to Google, hey, is it, is resident, it means something other than I live near you. This was not an issue that long ago, you just have nobody in these rooms, there's nothing that anybody cared about to really rally against, and then there's concerted effort to politic. And we have people here, we're talking that, oh yeah, I'm here and they're actually lawyers or outside areas have given their testimony and they don't want to have themselves as actually being the attorney or these groups. Whenever somebody says something, it's an open, honest dialogue and gosh darn it, let's be open and honest about it. The city council here was elected by the residents. They're influenced by other areas, but they were elected, they had to get people there to actually vote for them. So nine seven one three three doesn't get a chance to vote. People who live inside of North Plains do get a vote. And we do get effect their taxes, that's all taxation, that representation thing we had, you know, people from outside were telling us how to spend our money and this whole rubbish about that, I seen, I seen that documentary, it's true. I think it's kind of important to differentiate reference resident. Without kind of putting stigma or stink on somebody, I live outside of the city, but I still wanna tell you what to do. I think we should find some language to differentiate that, North Plains resident and outside of North Plains resident or resident of State of Oregon. Or resident of the zip code, I don't know if that's gonna be good enough for everybody to ask to listen to the words being spoken to give an proper understanding of where it comes from and what kind of responsibilities they have to the area. So I do like the idea so that you can differentiate between North Plains resident and somebody that's trying to politic and maybe come up here and have their opinions as if they live outside the city and they are affected by the decisions of this council. So, maybe get some more inclusive language, but I do think right now what we have, it says you're North Plains or a resident of North Plains. I think resident means some, something versus I'm, I'm your neighbor and I wanna tell you how to mow your lawn. That should be something that should be, um, uh, differentiated, so I think we need it. Because there's a lot more, before we did, there's nobody really give a testimony, but now there's a whole lot of policy to be done on and people make organized, um, organized campaigns and kind of know where it was coming from with that.
So, a couple, a couple things to clarify or, um, to add to the discussion, sorry, um, so we do have per charter, I think it is, uh, we do have non-resident seats on the boards and commissions, so there are non-residents who are advising the council through boards and commissions by design.
Yes.
So they do have representation, so from that perspective, it may make sense to in a similar way identify who's speaking, um, one thing I would add to this is it might be helpful if we're going to go down this path, just for the sake of being honest, is I'm representing myself or I'm representing a entity, what's the word, or a organization, organization, sorry. Um, just so that way we're clear, um, who they're speaking for. Um, but it seems like there's general consensus that we want something, we're just not sure what it is, is that kind of what I'm hearing? So I would think that this is something that, um, we need to move to a work session possibly in the future day, cause we're not gonna get the consensus on what specifically and I don't think that it's settled yet, so let's, let's add this to a later work session if, if that works for council.
But in the meantime, continue on with that practice.
Yeah, well, yeah, cause we have made a decision, I think we're close to something, but also it, it, this could go on all night, trying to, trying to workshop this thing, so, that'd be my suggestion, yes, counsel?
Um, if we, this Counsel Payton, if we move to a work session, who are you asking to bring forward the proposal?
Sorry, Counsel Ready, since this was your proposal, if, then I can help you or somebody can help you. We seem to come up with something, basically, this is we just need to go to design on this to figure out what we want to say, cause if we're into a resolution, it's gonna be codified and we, it's legal. But I think we have consensus, we want to do something, we just don't have the details, so we just need to hammer up the details.
And to be clear, everybody gets to speak.
Yes.
We just wanna know, uh, who you're speaking for.
And, and, and it is a good idea, it's just trying to figure out what the possible is like, so, okay, perfect, thank you. Uh, next is, uh, services and funding plan continued discussion, um, oh, Bill, this is the.
Uh, thank you, Counsel Dunbar, um, so after visiting with, um, after visiting with, uh, Counsel Dunbar about, um, you know, thinking about this next meeting. Um, we discussed the fact that it would be a good idea to get the calendars back up and kind of talk a bit more, get more feedback in terms of how um, council feels about, you know, how it wants to, um, proceed with thinking about new funding sources, um, for services, probably prioritize public safety. Um, but in there too is the fact that, um, greater perks, programs sort of thing is of interest as well. But anyway, so we're, we have kept this as a, as a continued, um, agenda item. So I just wanted to get the, the calendar back in front of you and I handed out a version of the calendar, but you probably are looking at on your device too. Though we really only, if, if we ultimately, again, if we only, if we ultimately are going to pursue a new local option levy to put on the ballot, to fund additional public safety or whatever. The soonest we will see new revenue, if that's approved by voters, would be in, it'd be a year from now, basically. Okay, but we would have to get um, a levy, a ballot, something, we have, we would have, finally put something on the ballot for the, the May twenty twenty six election, which means we need to have all of our stuff put together by this kind of February. If we didn't do that, and we, we chose on a, to think about it more and move forward a little bit later, the next election after that is November of twenty twenty six. And we would have to have paperwork put together by November, excuse me, August of twenty twenty six, but we wouldn't see the revenue for a year later, the way the, the county assessment schedule works. So the bottom line is, um, just kind of wanted to hear more, talk more about what you think about a process, how realistic you think it is to move quickly for something in February and what we might wanna do between now and then, or just kind of what you're thinking.
Counsel?
Last time we played a, a public safety levy in there. I think most of the council was for it, uh, we all voted unanimously for it, but I. I think most of the council was for it. Uh, we all voted unanimously for it, but I, I had. I thought it was too big of a bite. And it wasn't playing clearly enough. So we just, again, need to publicize. What's being spent on and what our first name is. The last time we were going to fix the water fund and have that, you know, we fix a, we're going to fix the job fund. Completely. And that wasn't expressed well enough. So we want to do that again. We need to have a lot of dialogue. Out loud. Here. Of what the budget is and how shuffle things back and forth to make it feel more transparent to actually how we're funding the city. Cause right now, water fund is funding most of it. And people don't see that. It is used to pay him. So when we do it again, you gotta say, okay. This is actually how much we're going to increase it. This is when it's going to go. So whatever we do. We need to be very transparent about it. And also, I recommend. Uh, not swinging for the moon, fixing one thing or another. And, and do, and do that. Instead of making one big huge clean sweep that we do everything we're doing. People don't understand it. They're going to think that. We're spending money really, really nearly. So that's my only thought processes. Want this to work, let's spend a lot of time on it, it's nowhere. Or spend a lot of time on it. And be sure every step of the way, to understand that I'm really willing for it, when it is coming from.
It's a very well reasoned argument of the counselors.
I'm also wondering if there could be a. Quick pulse test to even do a feasibility, if there's interest in that could even, uh, of what netting services we want to consider and. Depending on the outcome of that, that might inform our next step in terms of local investment and lived and. Town halls. So that's another consideration point.
The challenge we have. And Bill, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe the challenge we have is statistically significant data out of thirty six hundred people. Is what we've known, is what, at least that was my understanding of the past.
Um, Council Dumbrow, that is, uh, that's accurate. We can't um. We can't poll. In a scientifically significant way. Without like just calling eighty percent of the people, whi- which we can do, you know, so. If we, if we, if we roll things back a little bit, back um during COVID, we used um CARES Act money, the federal um. Federal grant, the federal grant we got, or maybe it was our, but either way. Um, we hired a company to do a feasibility study for the city to potentially do its own um broadband utility, its own cable company. Okay? And they had a company that they worked with. Dial a ton of households over half. So it wasn't a matter of polling and trying to get, you know. Polling three hundred and get a representative sample. Like they just, it was just scopes to call a ton of different people and, and get detailed input. That can be paid for and done. If, if there's going to be a, if there's going to be any sort of kind of input and poll. I would recommend you do it that way. So you have some level of certainty about what the city should do. Um, because for a city this size, and you know, it, it has its own unique qualities. Um, just regular polling and even just going online generally and getting people's opinions. You just get the opinion of people who are the most passionate for or against it, and that doesn't even begin to get it. You know. What do people, what did the majority really think? Would they even really be willing to pay for it? Um, and then do they want to on the phone saying, no, I'm not, I'm not going to. You know, I'm against the police, you know, nobody wants to say, nobody wants to be heard saying things that they might really think, but you know, um, they say something otherwise in, in the poll. So um, if you were to do anything, I would encourage thinking about kind of one of the more extensive efforts.
Yeah, to speak of that, I was a little bit surprised uh how. People say one thing. And it comes in, and then when Bill comes like, yeah, no. So you gotta fix some of that in too.
Yeah, that, that's a tough, that's a tough thing. Any other counselors have thoughts on this? Councilor Paper.
Councilman, I um. I want to take a couple steps back and ask. What do we want to spend money on? What are we seeking this money for? Because to me, this doesn't feel clear. Right now, it feels like we know that we want to potentially go to the public. And ask for additional funding, but we don't have a clear trajectory or vision of. What we will spend on as a public safety, as at parks. Anyone want to correct me if I'm wrong or chime in?
Uh, I think I misunderstood. I thought this was going to be a public safety levy, but I could have misunderstood.
It feels to me that this was, this is a rebalancing levy.
Oh.
Where we're, we're going to take money from the, that's currently going for the water fund to rebalance it to give it a public saving. And that's why this is standing happened last time. So.
I see your point.
Strategy. I, I, and I just share that again. I think everyone here is brilliant. I think city staff is brilliant, but I, I just want to take a step back because it doesn't feel clear and. For me to make a decision of, yes, let's move forward with this timeline, but. We don't actually know what we're going to be asking for. Feels a little bit like we're putting the cart before the horse. So I think um, you know. When we talked about council priorities, we have discussed. Um, you know, public safety was one of them, parks, and. If I'm remembering correctly, it was in no particular order that those priorities were structured. I think public safety maybe was one of the top bullet points. Um. But I don't think we've heard a resounding. Community input saying, we need more public safety. We need an additional FTE. Um, and so. I just want to kind of align us as a, as a council of. What are we asking for and for what?
A very similar point. Thank you.
That could also be a reason to do a, a survey or an online calling.
So i- if I might cancel, um. So tomorrow night. Is actually a pretty critical night for this conversation. And the reason is because if Washington County voters approve of the library levy tomorrow night. That begins the process for the county to work with all of its member libraries, the Washington County Cooperative Library Services. And the county will begin, the, the voters approving the levy will, will basically authorize the process by which. We will sign a new IGA, intergovernmental agreement with Washington County. And starting in FY twenty seven. The city's library allocation will go, annual library allocation of funds will go from roughly two hundred thousand dollars. To north of five hundred thousand bucks. Now, what that then means, and in the, the budget that you adopted. This reality, but with different number, with smaller numbers, you adopted a budget that reflects what's going to happen. That is. In the adopted budget, we assumed we'd be getting four hundred and ten thousand dollars rather than two hundred thousand dollars if the levy passed, the library levy tomorrow night. But if it's five hundred and ten thousand rather than four hundred and ten, that's a hundred thousand more. What that means is that we will realign the general funds. Splitting up of revenues, because now we have far more earmarked money coming from the county for our library. That means we can spend less of our own property tax money. On. The, our library, because the county's footing way more of the bill. And then that lets you all reconfigure. How the money, the, the city's property tax money will get divvied up between departments. So I think, I think what, so let me propose something. Let's see what happens tomorrow night. Then let's revisit this. I think there's polling messaging process that I think. My recommendation would be is we go out and find a consultant that has advised on a successful campaign, including a successful. Services identification and then funding. Process campaign. And because if you want to go out, if it ends up being, yes, we, the public says, we want another deputy. Do that, that gets us over the hump and we finally have twenty four seven coverage. And we know we need to go out the levy. Well, then that's a whole process. That, you know, you're going to want a big committee to go out and champion it and talk about it and so on and so forth. Like, there's a process. So my advice would be, we see what happens tomorrow night, then we know what the revenue landscape is for the general fund broadly. And then you have a better idea of how much more funding might be needed for what. The public might want, whatever it is. And then we, my advice would be, we find a consultant that can kind of walk you through clearly how this should work from determining the service need, if there is. And then the best way to fund it.
You also have the tough one, the government hasn't signed it either, right?
Oh, the, that, that's a great point, Councilor Page.
So we have another, well, that, the, the, the government, correct. So the governor, the, the transportation bill was passed by the legislature, um. It, even though it's gone through, and I can't, the governor has signed it or if the governor's going to sign it, but. The, 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 the likelihood is that it's going to, there's a strong likelihood it's going to be referred to the voters on the ballot to be overturned. But until that happens, uh, assuming it doesn't, and assuming the voters keep it. Um, we'll probably get about a hundred thousand more a year out of the state for transportation project, for ten, transportation maintenance. Sidewalks, streets. From the state. And so that changes things a little bit too.
Councilor Paper.
Council paper, thank you. I don't want to put Bill on the spot, but I would just ask, maybe at the next meeting. Or the next discussion of this, of this agenda item. That you. Share maybe the top three. Categories you see being most impacted on the next biennium budget. Because as I recall during our budget meeting. No, we, we passed a budget and. I don't want to quote, but uh, you know, it sounded pretty. Pretty grim if we don't find. A long-term funding source um for the next biennium. So I also would love to know maybe the top three services you could see being cut at the next biennium. Uh, because that might also help us direct. Where, you know, where we really are.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Paper. That's, that's a, a, a great question. It hasn't been asked that way yet. But what I will remind Council of is that. We can continue. For the next two years, we can continue to operate with the different types of services that we just have. If we add a police officer without a revenue source. That will ju, that will burn through our general funds and it'll burn through our general funds reserves period and tap heavily into the water funds reserves. So. Adding a, adding any new spending without a new revenue source to go with it. Just assures that in two years' time, you all are going to have to figure out hatchet on some things. I mean, it's just, there's no way to avoid it. It's a button, but I can come back with most likely things that.
Yeah.
You have to think about.
So I, I think what I would propose then, and councils can, you know, decide or not, or not agree, um, is. We don't have a clear objective with this other than just funding. So I think we need to get more clarity on what specifically are we trying to fund. Uh, with this and then um determine the path forward. I do think that we are likely going to need a levy, but I don't know. That I could articulate specifically what we, like, what we need that for. And if I can't articulate that to the voters. It would be hard for council, I think, to make a decision. Is that? Fair? Like, have your. Thoughts?
And even deeper than that, um, find out what a true allocation is for our budget, because last time we tried to. Read the entire budget. With that, with that levy.
Yeah.
And uh, doing what? To get what officer services are going to cost with our current spend. Versus uh, just change around the general fund and put it all towards that. It was too much, it was too much to ask. So maybe we need to make a smaller cut or a smaller. Change and redo our budget to truly show where our money's going. And that, that our water bill is paid for most of it, our, our, our government. Maybe. Change that first and then address deficits.
Yeah, okay. So Bill's that, or Council is that, are we in agreement that we need more information, I think, if I'm okay? Bill's that enough for you? Do you need more?
Chris, the clear, thank you.
I just want to make sure um, we covered them. Okay, cool. Uh.
Just, I just want to jump on the.
Please.
Uh, Norquains has the lowest taxes. Around. However. That's not true. We're still spending, just we're caught up in the water.
Right.
So if we're actually paying money for stuff, maybe we should spend some time to. Call it as it is. And I say, oh, you know, less taxes around. Well, maybe not. Maybe. Maybe the bills are saying we're just. Using different.
Getting it from different places, yeah.
Yeah.
That's fair.
Maybe that should be some of the effects where we would, we can do things.
I can, I can see that. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. Oh, that was very helpful. Uh, new business. So I'm going to take this one and Bill will jump in and, and recognize I did this wrong, but um. So. It's was brought up that we have varying criteria. For how we fill boards and Bill provided a staff report. Hopefully you've all read this. But basically, um, what is it? I believe it was just pre-read this. Uh, there, there's a couple of different ones. Like, I think library actually tells us, you know, who they would like. Uh, whereas I think planning commission and the rest, uh, this council approves. So what we're looking for is a standard. So the two options are either we allow the boards to um. Uh, boards and commissions with expiring seats to do the interviews and then make a recommendation to council. Um, unless otherwise uh indicated in the municipal code, or if we want to handle the reappointments, because we do have. Is it three seats, I believe, coming up in December here? Yeah. So. I'm open to. Thoughts, but I just want to get consensus on this and so we can give staff guidance. What, what are the thoughts?
Uh huh.
Please.
My thoughts are that the boards advise council. And I like to keep that happening. I think the, the boards to advise them do their own, their, their own process of letting. An incumbent council with who they think. Uh, they would like. However, I don't want it to be where the boards. That totally, I mean, if you want to come and give a board, they can. But they should have. We should know who the boards want working for them. So there may be. This is another case. There may be forty people vying for one spot. In the past. We had a publicized and beg for the one spot to be filled. However, if there's an, also there's a bunch of people that want to be on that board. I think that there should be a clear recommendation from the board of who they would like. Uh. To be on the board. Everybody else can also be on there, but they should have somebody that they like.
Could I paraphrase? I think what you're, I think what I'm hearing you say is we would like all the. Applicants to come to council, but maybe the one that the board recommends gets a star by the name or something. Yeah, and the, the board, the board makes the recommendation, then we decide between the four or twenty six candidates.
We, we have a star by the name. They could just say, uh, the board recommends.
Well, yes, yeah.
And we have, out of all these people, the board recommends.
Okay. I got you. Okay. Anybody else's thoughts? Counselor River.
What about applying a standard beforehand? To like how we had to, so.
Oh, a standard set of questions.
When we wanted to nominate you and go, yeah, we, we're decided, let's do it. And. Uh, Councilor Paper pointed out, no, we have a process. We open it up to the public first. So I'm not trying, the same with James, I don't want to. Dictate how boards and commissions do this, but maybe setting up a standard process beforehand and. We don't automatically roll over a term. We have, we, we have to open it and accept applications. X, Y, you know, certain standards like that.
I think you're both saying the same thing. I think you're coming at it from different angles, but yes, I, I think you're saying, you're both saying. It should be open to the public, but the board should also be able to recommend what the final say is reside with council. Okay, Councilor Paper, Counselor, take it on. Thoughts?
Okay, well, uh, Councilor Paper, I would say I am aligned with the idea of. Having an application process clearly laid out and essentially, you know, there's a, a clear progression of someone, a vacancy. Noticing the vacancy, applying, being interviewed by that board and commission, and then. That board and commission recommends to city council, and then we ultimately get your name. Um, so that would be my preference, and I think, again, just with the intent of no. Shoulder tapping is like, hey, I think you'd be a really great person, or, oh yeah, just go ahead and do another term. Not that I think that's happening, but I think that just having a really clear process, as silly as it might feel, if there's only one candidate. Think being clear and concise, um, with that streamlined approach would be my preference.
Being equitable. I like that. Councillor Higginon? So I think we have, I think, must, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what I hear from council as a consensus is. We would like it to be. The board, we would like to be publicly noticed. So for every position, whether it's a, a, a renewal or a net new. And then we would like the board to interview and recommend, and then council will make the decision between the candidates. Taking into account that the board has recommended someone. Is that, did I capture that?
I'm sure, right?
Okay, I think we have consensus. Thank you. Okay. Final, oh, sitting in, sorry, it is next.
Thank you, Councillor Brown. Um, okay. Four items I think I was gonna mention. Um, number one. I have gotten email or, um, comment in person from a couple of different. Uh, city councillors observing or talking to local businesses about difficulty in the business environment. Um, uh, we just learned today. That Chadwick's pit will be closing.
They are good.
Oh, they already did? Um, and I guess, um, we'll talk, I'll, I'll prompt the EDC to talk about it on Wednesday. Um, but just kinda wanna put it out there, you know, go shop local, talk to local businesses. Um. And I think what, you know, what I would be mindful of, and we can, we can talk more about it is, you know, we, we, we may very well be in. Beginning stages of what might be a severe, really severe recession, um, based on the nature of, at least for North Plains anyway. It might be on the worst side of things compared to other places, just because. You know, the, the workforce that we have here, and it's grown, um, to live here and other things. So, um. You know, we're, we're, we're watching that. We'll probably see some more businesses close. Um, I am. We are talking to the, the, the paper of record, the Forest Grove and Hillsborough Papers. Um, to potentially partner with the chamber on, um, a, a fine local advertising campaign over the course of months. Just to kind of give some local businesses. Stories. Quarter page full, you know. You know, we, we'll, we're, we're talking about that right now. So, um, we'll try to be doing some things on our end, but I would just, you know. Get out there and encourage folks to shop locally as much as we can, as much as you can. Um, but it might be a bad recession, so. That's the one thing, but we're, we're working on that. We'll talk with the EDC about it. Um, number two. Um, the, the planning, the, the grant to DLCD has been turned in, um, submitted in order to get, uh. zoning code rewrite, technical assistance. The planning commission, um, I, I don't know that we have a gigantic chance of getting, winning that grant. I mean, there's. Tons of grant applications were submitted apparently, so it's gonna be extremely competitive. So if we don't get that money, or if we don't get that grant award from DLCD to assist the city with the zoning code at the rewrite. You know, holistically, comprehensively. Um, the planning commission is gonna be chomping at the bit to work on. Zoning code update. And we're going to talk about that with them at the planning commission meeting this month. What's the path to getting it done if DLCD does not give us this technical assistance grant? And based on that conversation, just to kind of give you a heads up, we'll probably come back. And propose a, a joint work session with them to kind of figure it out. Because what we don't wanna do is, what we wanna do is. Our code is so old, it needs to be looked at. It needs to be professionally done. It just does. And if the state isn't willing to pay for it real soon, we either wait a long time or we figure out how to pay for it or elements of it or something. So we need to have a work session with you all probably in the near term and kind of talk about that. So just be prepared for that, is what I would say. But we're staff, planning commission, chomping at the bit to do this.
Yes.
But we think it should be professionally done. So, um, that's that. That'll be coming. Election night tomorrow, vote. Um, the library election is very, the library levy vote is very consequential for the city. So that's not a position of vote one way or another, but watch, watch the results. Um, because if, if the library levy passes, it's a major change for how our library gets funded. And therefore how other departments, how other general fund departments get funded. Um, so anyway, uh, and then the final thing is. Um, we're going to be kicking off that series of neighborhood meetings next week to kind of talk about. Kind of go over some of the information that we did during the UGB relit committee to kind of talk to residents about why the city might wanna be thinking about growing and. Give them some, have some neighborhood level input, um, on, um, on growth. And what it might look like and what the reasons, kind of focus more on the reasons for growing rather than to kind of throw. Alternatives at them and make them pick sort of thing. We wanna kind of have more of a conversation. So that starts next week, a week from Thursday. Um, it will be at, um, Apaladi Elementary School, six to eight. It will be targeting the Sunset Ridge neighborhood. Anybody can show up. But that's the one that we've planned to be close to the Sunset Ridge neighborhood. So, um, folks can just kind of walk over there and. You know, chat and, and a little bit more conversational. So that's the first one. We'll be putting out the schedule of those soon. I can't quote the rest of them off the top of my head. But that's the first one, so that'll kick the process off.
I haven't seen any information about that, just, it's just, just coming out.
Just coming out, yes, just coming out. So we'll get it out on socials and the website. Um, it's in the newsletter that's in the, uh. In the water bill, uh, for the month, or should be. Um, but we'll, we'll be talking more about that, cause it. This is actually, since the city visioning that was done in twenty fifteen. This is probably the first series of like. Out there neighborhood meetings on the topic. So we, we would very much look forward to the, the, the conversation, just to kind of, hopefully people will show up. But, um, it's more conversation and presentation and all that. So it'll be a little more. Hands-on friendly, I, I think. And maybe, maybe it'll be more approachable for folks to come and talk. So.
Do we have a way to reach out to their HOA? Like, we're kind of targeting, are we doing that?
Yes, uh, yes, it's very, yes, it's very much targeted. The, the next one, um, will be at North. At North Plains Elementary School, and it will be targeting the Bringley neighborhood. Um, and we're gonna have two at the senior center, one for the older part of North Plains. And then one in particular that's aimed at local businesses, businesses who are taxpayers in the city. So it'll be a little more business focused. Um, they'll probably wanna talk freight and infrastructure and all that more than parks and. In library and that sort of thing. That, you know, they don't care about the tax base and services as much, but they do care about the quality of roads and. You know, um, getting, getting freight to market and, and all that fun stuff. So it'll be, so one, one of the senior center will be a little more business. Than resident neighborhood land.
Uh, just a quick question, um. How do we have any applicants for mayor?
We have two at this point. Two new.
And so two, two additions, so three total? Or two total?
No, I have one, I have, I have one from, I have.
Yeah, mine and then. And we're, we're handling that in next meeting, correct?
Yeah, we're accepting applications till the fourteenth.
Yes, the fourteenth is two, two weeks from when it was public, from when the notice is published. So the seventeenth is the earliest meeting you, you all can read it.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, that's it for city manager.
Okay, council reports. Councillor.
So if you guys took your emails, I just sent out a picture I took, a living in, I was out Santa fishing. I stopped by a little pizza place over there, we're gonna have some pizza and enjoy it. And Bingen has a civic academy, twenty intensive. Now for breakfast, lunch, childcare and. It's pretty neat. But we're at the city hall. And this was talked about previous councils. Many times. About having some kind of civics class available. I don't know, just put it out there and add a QR code and thing just to try to give people brainstorming ideas. Of how we can do something that. Our first thought, thought process, we just have like, maybe there's a podcast that I record on YouTube or something that we could just look at at our own leisure, make it down in little small. Fifteen, ten-minute chunks. Uh, about various. Civics, um, education to put on there. So anyways, they have an all-day class. I was thinking about. Yeah. I love the still good ideas. Excuse me for having to think a book. So, uh, that's what I wanna talk about. Also, I'd like to, um, have council maybe think about. Was discussed earlier and, and other council meeting about large trucks parking in, in roads and how we have no code against it. What can you do? Maybe have a code. So we can enforce it about the trucks over a certain size or flatbed zone that use up a large neighborhood squaw for parking. And create an ice door and all the city issues and that we have to see around it. Currently have nothing about it. So, uh. Maybe that'd be something good for the planning commission. To think about and maybe to give them some, uh, traction. Uh, another thing is, if you look at the, uh, calendar. Um, McCall Wallace was supposed to be, um, the economic bill meeting next Wednesday.
This Wednesday.
This, this Wednesday and, uh, Hagador was put on there. I think I, are you there or am I? So I thought I was.
Oh, I thought I was, but.
No, no. What, so what I'm trying to avoid is two people, you know, same, same time.
Your, your planning commission this month, yes?
I'm planning fishing now on, uh, the twelfth.
Okay.
So. I'm not doing it Wednesday.
I see my name here on.
I do see your name and also see my emails.
Oh, that is confusing.
Who's covering library?
James Cam.
All right.
Okay, so I'm more than happy to give James the half pass if he wants to do EDC.
Whatever, I just wanna.
You guys just need to let me know, so I.
I'm sure to not be.
Nobody even.
Calendar, so I was assuming I was attending, so I would need to. I think I have your name on.
And then I'll take the library board on the nineteenth.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
EDC, councillor Hagador.
Councillor Brown.
And this way.
Library and councillor Fage.
Okay, cool. So I'll tweet this Wednesday.
All good.
All right. Excellent.
Okay. Councillor Higginon.
Well, let's see, I, I attended, um, municipal, um, LLC's municipal fundamentals. Um, I encourage you guys to take that class. There's, it's got completely different content. It was very much so, time well served. Um, they also went deep into the, um. The new public meeting law, since I'm signed off for a year, which is a big luhu. I know camps, um. Robin was in attendance too, and she had the same sentiment. It was time well served and I, I hope that you all get the chance to sign up for that. Um. I sat in on Friday, um, for Dunbarow at MA MAC. Um, and basically the agenda was still talked about, the Comcast contract. Um, it's still going, nothing new, really exciting. That was basically the spirit of the meeting.
I thought they already put that.
Still going, it's still going.
When you put Comcast attorneys and. Our attorneys together, nothing will get done. So guarantee it, thanks for work there.
Just, that is why we went through the process of adopting a right-of-way license.
Yes.
So those attorneys are no longer involved.
Such a headache.
Yeah.
But thank you for attending.
Yes, uh, yeah, it was, it was interesting. Um, more than happy to, to take one for the team occasionally.
Don't make it happen.
And, um, I guess final, I, I was going to add a mention that I will be ex officio on Wednesday at EDC, so that's another friendly reminder. That's all I have for you.
Good point, brother.
Well, I got lucky this one for ex officio, so thank you to my peers. And I attended, uh. Couple of weeks ago, I attended the ribbon cutting for the Beaverton CAT, our center for addictions and triage and treatment. Center, um, so it's in the old Waka building over off Evergreen Parkway. Um, this is the second opening. Um, there was a, a prior opening of the CAT building in Hillsborough, um. Right off the Max line in Elamium Parkway. So this was a really exciting project to see, um. Serving on the Washington County Policy Advisory Board. We actually got to go see, um. See the building before they started renovating, so got to see. The old Waka building and all the wiring and everything that goes with it. So being able to see this full circle now and, and it's intense was really neat to see. Um, a couple of things about the CAT Center itself, um. They do sobering, detox, transition ser, transition services, um, and just residential treatment for those that are addicted to alcohol. Or opiates. And, um, they have a twenty-four seven. Center, um, in partnership with Coda, and they, um, have varying lengths of stay, but. When it's fully operational, we'll have eighty-six beds, um, which will be really impactful and it's really. Um, a, a, one of its kind type of service in, in Oregon right now. And I know, uh, some of the Washington County Commissioners have shared. They hope that this becomes a pioneer for other jurisdictions across the country. Um, so just really excited to see that come to life and, and see everything, um, full circle.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, for mine, um, I met with, uh, Ayla Hoff, who's running for, uh, Ward Four for Washington County. Been working with Marsha, so you should all meet Ayla, um, and at least get to know the candidates. I met the other candidate and I forgot the name, I apologize. There's currently two, I think, that are registered, uh, and we expect at least one more. Uh, but you should get to know your commissioner candidates, um, and I've been. Meeting with some of the governor candidates as they reach out, just to understand what their platforms are and what they're gonna do for North Plains. Um, so far, nothing, but it's worth a shot. Um, and it's also good to kind of connect them out with, uh, Commissioner Willie, just trying to. Well, basically get a seat on the call back board, so we can try to get some funds out of them and also try to make some friends in the county. Um, cause that's always a good idea. Um, let's see, what's my other thing? Oh. So I wanted to address Sue's public comments with the parking. But then councillor Fage, it sounds like we don't have a parking policy on that. Is that what you're saying?
Right, uh, we was talking about last time and, uh. Our, our police chief said that, uh, that's, I understand that we have no code.
Okay.
So we need to get a code.
So what I would like to ask for consensus on is sending that to planning commission. Is it, that's correct, right? Fine, yeah, okay. So if we have consensus, we'd like the planning commission to at least come back with a recommendation.
Absolutely.
Okay, so yes, and Sue, thank you for bringing that.
That, not the large trucks. But, uh, parking of, uh, RVs on the street.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Basically, our video street, because that can lead to other issues that can happen right now. But if we get a, some kind of. Limited of one day or something like.
We do have that nerves.
Okay.
When is the time period for that?
I think it's five days.
Yeah, um, we can get it to you, but there, we do have that.
So it sounds like we would like planning commission to work with the timing on that and maybe. We may want.
Beautiful class, distance from crosswalks. I think I heard as well as duration of time. Forest Grove has a pretty good example of. What is good and what is, or what is.
Perfect. Yeah, so it, it sounds like we have consensus. We'll send it to planning commission. Thank you again for bringing that again to us. Sometimes we just need a reminder. Um, oh, please, yes, I'm sorry.
You know, that actually sparked something I was talking to another resident about, um, and, you know, I know in our, um. Code it mentions engine braking, but I think that might be a topic to bubble up to. Potentially package in with a sign or signage, um, with the new ASML building, um. On West Union, there's been quite a bit of influx of traffic and trucks. Um, and then with Frank's excavation, also gonna be going in on West Union. I just wanted to bubble that up.
Bill says we can regulate noise there though. Cause we have science here, commercial. So we.
So I'm just curious if we had consensus to bubble nine when we were talking with us.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I've.
So. Yeah, so add that to, if we could add that to planning commission as well. Just have them bring us a recommendation on what they want to be with it. And then we'll strongly influence. Getting it done. Awesome, um, and. Uh, I think that was the only other thing I had, other than thank you. My goal is to be out of here by eight and we almost made it. I really appreciate all the hard work everybody did to get us through the meeting, um. And with that, is there anything on calendar? I think we just went over calendars. Thanks to councillor Fage. Anybody have any alibis before we adjourn? Well done. I adjourned the city council meeting at eight ten.